It says you can't book more than eight times.
All right, seven o'clock. Hit there. You want to hit it? Say we'll call the meeting to order.
What?
Call the meeting to order.
Uh, call the meeting order.
Good job. All right. Thank you guys.
You're welcome.
First item on the agenda is approval of the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Moved is her second.
Second it.
Moved and second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay, motion passes. Next is a consent agenda. Entertaining motion to approve that.
I approve the consent agenda. I second his approval.
It's been moved to approve and second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay.
I like the way he did it.
Motion passes. Uh, next, is there anybody here to like to speak to something not on the agenda?
Jerry Smith, thirteen oh eight High Street, Baldwin City, Kansas. About two and a half years ago, we were discussing the project that was going on fifty six where it was going to straighten out the road. And at that time, I think that was what one, one point two million that would cost or something like that. Is that still being discussed? Is that ended or?
Um, so just a quick update, I guess it has, it's still being discussed. We have sent a request into the state to increase the amount that they're paying for that project. But we haven't, as far as I'm concerned, we have not received a response back from that.
Okay, is that, is that project on old totally?
No.
Okay, I have heard that it was two years back.
I heard that for that, uh, fifty six west of Baldwin City for the.
But this is still in line.
But this one is still going as far as I'm concerned.
And you're building a new house, is that correct?
Me?
Huh?
Yeah.
Okay, are you connected to anything utilities with the city?
Um, no, because the city doesn't own any of the utilities in that area.
Okay, are you exempt? The tax return means you're not connected to anything in the city? Do you get your, your property tax, does that go back for five years?
I mean, that's available for anybody building houses in Baldwin.
Okay, so, so you do then, you still, you get your money back.
Correct.
Just like everybody else. I have nothing else, thank you.
Anybody else like to speak something that's not on the agenda? All right. Old business, Brick Street Project, is there anybody here like to speak to this agenda item? Saying nine council discussion? Or I guess, Russ, can you present kind of to the council what you guys got from the?
So, uh, we put out a survey to the citizens. Um, basically there was four different options. Uh, the first option was a city flag. We had another option that was just a regular maple leaf as well. And then we had the city logo and then we also had the fourth option was prefer, um, you know, just the bricks plain. Out of that, we had ninety nine people respond. Um, forty two point four percent voted in favor of the city flag. And the next closest one was the leaf. Um, and that was twenty seven point three percent.
Okay, this up for council discussion, council doesn't need to do anything. Uh, we've approved the bid already for the replacing the bricks on the intersection, so. Kind of to whatever the council would like to do.
We discussed this in our committee, uh, a little bit. And, um, one of the things that was brought up is that if the, if the leaf is in the middle of the, um, intersection, and we still have the huge semi trucks going over the streets, that, uh, that could be a problem as far as keeping it, up, you know, upkeep, upkeep on it. Um, so I think what we should be doing is really getting a truck route established.
Yeah, I, I agree. I think, um, even with not doing a leaf or doing any new brick streets, I think we're going to have to enforce a truck route. Uh, in, in around downtown. I believe Russ, and maybe you can speak to this, we have a truck route. It goes down technically, uh, the ordinance that was passed years ago, down Eleventh Street, up High Street, and then Lawrence Street, is that correct?
Yes.
So it's just now it's enforcing, I mean, obviously, we have to allow minimal trucker traffic for the businesses downtown, but.
All right, I understand that.
Yeah, I think no matter what with this brick street project, we're going to have to really take a look at enforcement and if that means taking a look at the intersection at Eleventh and High and where you're working that to make sure that trucks can make that turn a little bit, I, I think that's going to have to be on the horizon. Any other discussions? Questions, anything else? The council wants staff to do for this or? I, I'm, Russ, did we get any type of indication on when they needed a kind of a drop dead?
Pretty much they need a decision here really quick if they're, you know, like maybe the festival weekend to be able to have it in place before. They're just kind of just waiting on. Uh, part of the bid process was that the bid that had been completed prior to Maple Leaf. So I don't know if we postponed making a final decision. I don't know that that would change their bids. But, so.
Oh, we approved the bid last.
We approved.
Meeting contingent on adding this.
Correct.
Yeah, so they've got a commitment.
They have a commitment, but we just need to know exactly like, do you guys want the leaf in, in there?
Right.
We just want to have a whole grid.
Right.
We just really need direction.
I like the idea of the city flag leaf, um, the consistency of, of something we already have. And, but yeah, Julie, I think you're right. We, and I know we've discussed it before that we need to start enforcing the truck route.
I assume they're going to use new brick for the leaf because it's a different color.
So according to, according to the, the one bid, it was, you know, replace, first one was replace all with new brick, two different color patterns, so in that thing, two hundred nine thousand, two hundred and seventy five dollars. Now to replace the outer with new pavers and salvage the pavers that we currently have and use that for the maple leaf pattern, that would be a hundred and ninety three thousand five hundred. Is the bid that they, they submitted here.
And that's using the old brick on the maple leaf? So then we'd have to decide if the council chose to go this route, we'd have to decide on what colors and all that stuff.
Or they, I'm, I'm lost. I mean, we, are we painting bricks or?
No, it'd be new brick on the, the maple leaf would be the old brick.
Right, so it's going to be its color.
It's going to be whatever the color is that's there currently.
Okay.
The color for the maple leaf, then the outer pattern would be.
Gotcha. Okay.
So there could be, you know, choices for what color exactly you want for that.
We anticipate that to be different than the streets that are going to connect it up to it.
Well, I think that's part of the discussion is if we're going to do old brick as the maple leaf and the new brick, I mean, we're kind of making commitment at that point of what color the bricks are going to be going forward if we have to switch from old brick to new brick. You know what I'm saying? Does that make sense?
Yeah, I mean, very easily could have just, they don't match whatever we use for this versus whatever the street connecting to them are, they potentially would be old versus new or vice versa.
Yes, yeah, this at least has both in it.
Right.
Where going forward. And right now we're sitting with this intersection's just all planes with the old brick. That's where we're sitting right now with what was approved. We just need to know, oops, if we need to.
So is the leaf going to have the, the red? Um, thing around it? I mean, it's, I'm confused. Is it just going to be the leaf or is it going to be?
It's the rest of the bricks.
Okay.
The red.
Okay.
That would connect to the streets.
Okay. That makes, that makes sense, okay.
Well, to keep the option open of using old bricks on the other project, I think the maple leaf probably needs to be the new brick. And then that way, if we're going to connect old brick to old brick, it will, it would probably look better. Well, but whether we're going to be able to use old brick when we tear it all up, who knows, but to keep that possibility alive, I think it would look better with new brick is the maple leaf and old brick on the outside.
I agree.
Good idea, yeah.
I agree a hundred percent.
Yeah. I like that idea. I mean, since the people voted to try to use old brick, that would give us our best and to go with what they wanted, that might be the best option, but.
Yeah, I think the, I think the leaf should look newer.
Yeah.
And then use the old brick around it. I like that.
Yeah, we're good with that. So do we need to vote on that or do we?
Yeah, we, we need to have a motion to approve the leaf design to be included into the, into the work and then I would add on which brick is the old brick and which brick is the new brick.
Okay.
All in one package.
Does anybody else have anything to say?
Uh, is there anybody from public want to comment after hearing discussion? Go ahead, Jerry. Yeah. Yeah, it's just so the people watching can hear as well.
So, I saw a driveway a week ago that was, and I would have bet money that it was brick. But it wasn't, it was painted like brick and it, or made, made like brick and it looked like brick. And it was, uh, they laid it down and then they rolled it down and made it look like brick. It's, and it's beautiful. Can you use something like that? And, and the corners that you have on this, if you get heavy loads coming across there, even street sweepers or, or, or our maintenance trucks for the city, those corners are going to break. It'd be better to have an oval or a circle.
Julie and I asked, uh, Rob at Public Works this exact question and he was not worried about that at all. He thought making an oval cut or any sort of circular cut would be worse than straight, straight lines.
Really?
Because we, we brought that up at Public Works, Julie and I both did and he, everyone in public, the Public Works meeting thought that straight lines would be better and last longer than if we were cutting ovals and that kind of stuff.
I, I don't, I don't, I don't disagree with that on straight lines, but when you get a corner and you got six of them or eight of them, they're going, they're going to chip and break. I, I think that's, thank you for listening.
Need further council discussion?
I'm looking at Jay. Oh. You had a great idea. Uh, I motioned that we add the city flag leaf design into the intersection using new brick as the leaf and old brick for the border.
Moved is her second?
Second.
Moved and second all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed nay. Motion passes. Next agenda item, council hiring committee discussion, so just an update from the committee on that. Kind of where we sit.
Give your thoughts. Sure.
Yeah.
Um, and Amber, you can jump in here too if, um, so we met with the League of Municipalities for the state of Kansas. I think you have all, you have their proposal in your packet. Um, went through the process, kind of their history, um, success rate, et cetera, and, uh, so all that looks good. I think what we asked for is at least another, um, search firm that we could do, at least make sure that they, they're comparable. And we did get one of those, I think that's in the packet as well. You kind of see price differential, the process is pretty much the same. Um, so, uh, one of the things that did come out of the meeting is the need to write an accurate job description. And what that means is we've got to figure out what the job entails because we've kind of splintered it up over the past several years. And we could certainly move forward that way, but the description needs to detail, you know, everything that this role is going to be responsible for. So their recommendation was, you know, you, you guys first need to get together and figure out, you know, what your organization looks like and what those roles, the reporting structure and what those roles, um, responsibilities are. Um, really before you can move forward because you're going to throw a job description out that's probably going to be incomplete. Um,
They also, um, talked about if we decide to go with them to help us with this. Um, doing a survey, um, a council survey and then also a survey for the department heads, um, you know, the different areas and, uh, get those back and see, um, you know, the survey would be like, what, what do you think? Um, it should be maybe some things that you don't want it to be? That kind of stuff, so. Um, that's, I think where they were going to start.
Yeah.
The other thing I liked about the league is that, um, they have all of the resources. They've got. Thank you. Um, so what was I talking about? Uh, they have all the resources, um, as far as getting comparables with other cities on what they do and, um, you know, costs that they've, uh, gotten and that kind of thing. So I think, I think the league really has, um, especially, um, statewide. They have all the tools to get the information for us.
The job descriptions with them, um, for both a city administrator and a city manager. We don't have the manager role in our city, but she wanted us to be able to see the difference. So I, I'm, I should have said that in the email, I apologize.
Yeah, thank you.
So, um, is this something that you guys will kind of work up a job description to bring in front of the council and?
I think the council needs to work up a, I mean, it's a, I, I think it's, it's council's responsibility to determine, you know, what the organizational structure is and what those roles are and specifically this one, or if we change current roles, what those are. Um, and I don't think that's a committee activity necessarily. I think it's a.
A work session.
I think we'd need to do that and you need to get input from the people that are currently in roles that may change, you know, how much in your current role, what do you do? Is it too much, et cetera, and, and just figure out what makes the most sense? Or we, or we stay the same in the same reporting structure, but, um, until we do that, we can't write a job description or we shouldn't.
Okay.
And I think they were, they agreed. Um, but you know, I also said they could do this in ninety days and thirty of those days are after you've released the job description, posted it, you're just waiting for responses. So that's pretty aggressive. Um, and they offered up, um, to come down if we want both, uh, companies that provided us a proposal to come down and present next meeting. Um, if we wanted to, they were more than happy to do that. That's up to this body to decide if, if you want to do that. But they're ready to go, waiting for, you know, our decision and what, kind of what we timeline it is if, if we do have presentations next on the fifth, then it would be the following, uh, two weeks later that before we could actually commit to a contract with them, so.
That at least give us some time to do some surveys and have a work session after the, after the, if we have them present, then we could have a work session that next week.
I don't think that they would do the surveys till after.
Right.
They committed with.
Okay.
That's correct.
Okay.
So, so we kind of got to weigh, do we want to spend another two weeks, um, to determine if we want to go with the league or not? And that's fine, you know, I think if you saw what the, the proposals were, they were pretty dramatically apart price wise. Um, and so I guess from the committee's perspective, you know, our, our thought was, you know, it looks like, um, based on what they presented, they know how to do this. Um, they have had success. And they're ready to go. Um, and, uh, so I, I think our guidance would be we, we, you know, we move forward with, with the league based on their proposal. And we can come back on the fifth and, you know, and, and put it up and review it publicly, which is we probably should do, we need to do before we vote on it, so. I, I guess our recommendation is let's be prepared to make a decision on the fifth. Um, or if the council wants us to get more bids, we can try to get those in as well. Um, but I think we need to come prepared to review at least the bids that we have at the, at the next council meeting and, uh, if you want them to show up and cover it, we can do that as well, so.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but it is, we are going to need a work session to hammer out a job description.
Yeah, I like that idea. It's a, it's an opportunity to refine that rule.
It, it is, and, and actually the organizational structure of, of, of that, you know, of the city administration piece of it.
Yeah, and it sounds like the league is an excellent resource.
Yeah, it is. And if we, um, if we write up a job description and they will look it over and maybe have some suggestions of, you know, maybe you'd want to do it this way instead or, uh, you know, it's that they've done this so much that they've got it down. So, and they're half the price of the other company.
Okay, well, we'll just plan on bringing this back at the next meeting then. And in the meantime, if you could send availability to Amber for work sessions. Um, I mean, it sounds like we have some time for the job description, even if we approved it because they're going to want to do surveys and everything else after that. So we kind of want to get that back anyhow, so actually.
You do have an extra week in between next council meeting, so if we.
Yeah, but if we're not approving it tonight and we haven't done any of the surveys or anything like that.
Oh, that's true.
So we want to get back that information before.
Yeah, but the job description is independent of who we go with, if that's what you're talking about, a work session.
I'm talking about a work session to develop the job description, which hinges on who we choose. I thought, I thought they didn't want to do the survey until it shows them.
I don't think any firm's going to want to move forward if we don't have a, a job description, clear job description, or they're going to say. So I guess they'll take any job description and put in front of them. I guess based on what we know and what we talked about, based on how we're currently structured, we think it's worth a review to make sure that's the appropriate way to be. Because we have a new person coming in and we can fit the role um, to a new person, you know, based on skill sets that we want to go get. Right?
And even if we have one that we want to start with, they do the survey and we decide we want to have something, add some or take some off or something. Something to start with.
We'll email Amber with your availabilities and we'll go from there, trying to get something set up.
And we guess, just let them know we're planning to make a decision on the fifth or?
Yeah.
Yeah, what?
Might as well.
About having, um, that, I can't remember his name, but.
Director.
Yeah, uh, to come and, and present it to the whole.
I would say that'd probably be good on the fifth to have them here to present. At least the league, if they're that much cheaper.
Yeah.
If they're that much cheaper, I would say no.
I would, I would say no too, and I think the league just has a better grasp of what's, um, what's happening in Kansas and.
I think if the council's not comfortable with them, we could always delay it and bring more people in. It's kind of like first one in, let's see, and if we're comfortable, let's move, if not, we'll continue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, next, electric rate ordinance, one five one three. Uh, Scott, do you kind of want to present from the committee's standpoint and then we can ask for public comment?
I don't know if you want to present or Russ or, I mean, I, I can just talk to, um, you know, what I was going to do in the committee reports, but you know, we've committed to bring back to the council a couple of options, you know, and, and, and the options really just change. Um, mainly where we plan to end up with the reserve fund. And so, uh, we went through, um, a couple of options with different rate increases, you know, as you can see in your packet. Um, and then also a, a third option that starts moving in the direction that we have the water fund where we're breaking out. Um, our debt payment cost out into, you can call it a meter fee, but it, it's a debt payment fee. So if you remember how we did the water, that's a separate line item. Um, and so the third proposal, and we can walk through these, um, Russ, I don't know if you want to or anybody want to walk through those. I can, it's, it's up to you.
I think somebody needs to explain it.
Yeah. Oh, definitely. It's, uh, I'll give it a shot. You guys chime in if you want to step up here and weigh in. Um, from, uh, Baker Tilly, if, if I speak incorrectly or you can add color. Um, yeah. Um, and just introduce yourself so we can. Okay, and, and he sat in on last Friday's, um, discussion. Um, so if you just look at the options, um, let's just walk through these and stop me if you don't understand or you have, you have a question. Um, so the first option is, you know, a rate increase in July, so you can see the February increase, that's already happened, so it's just put in there and that's why it's, it's in black shade, so. Um, the first option is increasing the rates, um, by fifteen percent, followed by a rate increase. I really should say October in my mind, because so July, August, September would be at fifteen percent and then another ten percent increase for October, starting October, no, December. And so what you can see up at the top and the, in the, uh, line above that in cash reserve, you can see where we're estimating, we would estimate to finish this year at three hundred and eighty two thousand roughly on the, uh, on twenty to twenty five estimate. And just for context, our policy, um, we really need to be at nine hundred thousand is, is our target or we need to get to and have a plan to get there. That's what the bond rating agencies look at, what's your plan, how are you going to do it? Um, is that correct, man? Yeah, so, um, so that's the option. It's, it's, it's two increases. One in July, really one in October, um, and it would get us to three hundred and eighty one. Then if you look at an estimate, again, the further out you estimate, the, the, the worst it's going to be because just too many variables. But just plug it in at ten percent with the assumptions that, you know, Baker Tilly makes on expenses and costs and all that. Um, you know, if we, if we increased it ten. You know, if we, if we increased the 10% next year, you know, it would be about flat on the reserve, right? So, uh, that tells you. Expect costs to go up or revenues to go down or both. And then just another 3% in 2027, which is really. Our cost of, uh, or, or what are we, what are we calling that? The, uh.
I mean municipal.
Municipal inflation, yeah, cost index is running around two to 3%. So that in itself, you know, if that's just 3%. By the end of 27, we get really close to that policy, right? 830K. So that's one option. And Russ did a great job of writing up the ordinances. You got all three ordinances in the packet. So we can, what we need to do is. Approve one of those tonight, um, so we can move forward and capture July, um, in this. So the second option. Again, is, is the first thing you look at is what are the in cash reserves? We estimate in 25, you know, 26 and then 27. This one gets us, you know, estimated to our, our reserve. Policy in 27, but it, it is a 25% increase in July. Across the board. Pretty straightforward. Painful as it is, it's pretty easy to understand what, you know, how we would do that. Um, and then just the same 10% next year and 3% next year. Again, we're going to go through these rate discussions. In November on all these utilities and we're going to have a clearer view of what we did this year. We're going to have a clear view of what our forecast is going to be. And we're going to set the rates and whether it needs to be 10%, whether it needs to be 2%, 5%, whatever. You know, we, we will at that time set what we want to do in 26. So we're just really talking about 25 here, the rest of 25. Of what we're, the ordinance is about. And so everybody clear on those two options. Um, so the third option is. Is pulling out the debt out of, out of the expense line, out of the, of the rate line and putting it. Standalone. So as you remember in the water, uh, billing structure now, we've got a debt, I think we call it debt meter payment. It's really not paying for the meter on, uh, debt on that meters. It's paying for the infrastructure debt, all the bonds that we've. Done for that water department. We know what our payments are. They don't change, just like a house loan. You, you know what it is. It's easy to calculate every year. So. That payment, um, that line on the payment would change. As our bond payments are retired, right? So. From one year to the next, if we've added bonds or we've retired bonds, that number will go up or down. And you'll be clearly be able to see that, um, as a, as a citizen. So what the intent here was to start in that direction and. Pull out $25 per month. So the meter fee is currently 12. We'd move to 25. And the, uh. Rate increase would be 10% in July for. Basically everybody but the demand customers. So demand customers would, they don't have meters. They don't pay meter fees. So to make sure that they pay, pay for the infrastructure, what's paid for by the bond, which is our debt. So theirs is going to move. Uh, to a 15% instead of 10. So that's up in the, in the option line up there. You can read that. It's not. That 10% is really just the residents and I guess every, and, and the, and the people that currently have the residential rate. So it's, if you're not on a demand meter, it's everybody else.
I don't, what is a demand meter?
Like Baker, the school district, the large users, that's their, the demand.
It's complicated. Basically it's a, it's, it's a formula that incentivizes them to keep their peak as low as possible. Because as you know, when we go through all of our capacity, it's set on the peak plus 15% so. It, it incentivizes them to keep that as low as possible. So if all our demand customers are focused on that. It helps us, right? Because we have to build this thing out to the peak plus 15. So. In its essence, that's what that is, but it's a formula. I don't understand it. Jeff does, but it's, it's complicated. But that's what it's supposed to do. So they're, they're going up 15%. Thereabouts would be going up 10% on this option.
I'm going to add to that Scott, um, the $25 on the meter fee. Covers about 75% of the bond. That's, so the other, that's why the demand customers, because their. Bond portion of their payment is built into their fees. So that's where the extra 5% comes in to them. Is that covers the extra 25% that we're not collecting from the citizens. So essentially it's a fairer way to make sure that everybody is covering. Proportional amount of the bond. Based on their usage versus just based on sheer numbers. Right now our residents are kind of taking. A larger percentage of the bond. This kind of backs that back and makes it more proportional based on their use. Did I capture that correct?
He nailed it. And then you can see, you know, this would again, with the 10% in 26 and three and 27 would get us up to. Our reserve policy.
Make, find a way to make it equitable for all your institutional and commercial customers as well.
Yeah, I think the point of bringing this option was to, you know, go like as Scott alluded to. Go more into that direction of what we've done with other utilities to set out so that the residents can see exactly what goes to debt. And then the portion that goes to just normal operations under the city. So. That's where the debt slash meter fee comes into play. Um, it's just harder to do on our demand. Side because they might have one meter that, but they're using 10% of the total, um, power that's coming into our community. So. That's where we had to do the kind of the math to figure out what would be the most equitable way to make sure that those on demand higher users. Are also covering the portion of their, their debt that's proportional to what their usage actually is. That makes sense?
We'll get a chance to look at it again when we visit in November. And if we do move forward trying to reformat this utilities, um, billing structure like we did water. We're going to have to figure out, you know, rates and, and these debt percentages.
So on option three, in the blue, it says July 10%. So that's not an increase, correct?
It isn't.
It is.
So we're still going to do 10% to not, would do 10%.
Now, wait, wait, wait.
25.
Yeah, it's.
You don't have it as.
He, he missed that. Good catch.
Yeah, I actually brought that up to Russ today when I reviewed it.
So there was still would be a 10% increase on here.
10 and 15.
Yeah, so.
10, 10% in July.
For non customers.
For non-demand customers. Demand customers will see 15% increase. On that option.
But nothing in October. I mean, no other.
And not 25% across the board. So I'm going to, if, I'm going to ask for public comment real quick to this agenda item. So is there anybody from public want to speak to this agenda item? You can stay up here just in case nobody, I don't want to make you sit down, stand up, sit down, stand up. Seeing none? All right. Counsel discussion.
I like the transparency in option three. I like that, you know, it's. It's like, this is our debt and it makes you more, I think, aware as city council members when you make decisions. That is going to be directly, um, make a direct impact on the bill. And we reach, um, where we need to be by 2027. That's definitely where I'm leaning.
I mean, I definitely like option three is less impactful to the residents for sure, more impactful to the on-demand. But also I think it goes, it, it lines us back up to where we want to be. And that's where. You know, we're separating out our debt payment. So that way it's more transparent. People can actually see where their money's gone to. More directly, but also as we get more customers, that will also be shown as well. So. If we add five customers, it might, it might not change it that much out of 2,000 meters or 2,000 customers. But it will, it will affect it every single year. If you add more customers, if your debt drops off. In 27, we have a large amount of debt that is dropping off. So essentially then the meter fee drops down. To only cover that amount of debt. So.
And that's why the reserve fund gets so healthy at the end of that year without really raising the rates at all. I mean, currently that's, that's the plan. And if you remember a couple of years ago, we, we passed an ordinance that required the council to identify. The source of funding for any bond that we let, right? So. And we could always say, well, this is the share, um, but then it gets lost in your bill. You can't see it. It's in your rate. You don't know how much was, was your usage? You don't know how much was the debt? Is it really in there? This number will be right on your bill. And, you know, and it will change as the, the debt load changes. But we probably also need to look at then changing our billing format to make this as easily digestible as possible. Because there will be more information there than there currently is, but I think that's a good thing.
So we'd have a 10% increase this month and none for next year either?
Um, there, I mean, there's the estimate in the, in the spreadsheet is 10%, but we'll revisit that November and see what it looks like. Whether that's the right number. That's just a.
It's not included in this.
Now this, yeah. So the only order, things we're talking about on the ordinance is for 2025. So it's that column C. One of those options in columns.
Any other counsel discussion? Thoughts, opinions?
Yes, um. So if option three, we go up 10% and the add the $13 basically to the meter fee. Is that cheaper for the customer, for our citizens than doing? The July, the, doing option one, like dollar, like what would dollar amount? What's 10%? So we know it's $13. What's 10% like? Or we, you know, so we know they know exactly, or is it cheaper for our customers, even though it doesn't get us to our. Projected number, what is going to not hurt our cus, our citizens? I mean. So is raising it in July 15% than 10 in September? Is that cheaper to our cus, to our citizens? Rather than the $13 we're adding plus the 10%.
Yeah, that's a tough question. It really depends on how much electricity you use. I mean, that's, that's the. If you don't use any electricity. Then your percentage increase from 12 to $25 is pretty big. If you use a lot, that's not a very big move percentage wise. So it's a great question. That's what we need to study. We need to look at that. Actually plot where it makes, where it hurts you or helps you. But I think Casey's.
Honestly, it hurts bigger families. Well, they're going to use more electricity. I mean.
Right, but the rate, you know, the rate's lower. I mean, the bottom line is we need to get to 25% effectively rate increase for everybody. The rest of this year. And whether that, that 10% plus that $13 is more than that or less than that depends on how much you use.
Well, and I'll add to that Jay, you know, if you're a solar customer right now. And we, we know based off the calculations we did in committee that per meter to cover our bond. It's $25 per meter to cover 75% of the total bond payment, right? But if you're a solar customer. Right now, and it's just a rate increase, but your solar is bringing it back down to the $13, then you're effectively not. Covering the share of the bond. Does that make sense? So that's why I was looking at, you know, when we were in the committee, looking at. Doing this to make sure that we're covering our bond payments within. This was so that way the solar customers also were at least contributing to the infrastructure costs of our bonds.
Yeah, I don't disagree that they shouldn't, but. But the $13 plus the 10%, I'm, I just was wondering if. Is that cheaper than the 25% if we gradually did it like option one? I, that's all, that's my biggest question. Cause I mean, not to sound like a broken record, but, um, times are tough for a lot of them. So. It's just what, and I know we can't have an exact number. I understand that, but. Whether it gets us to where we need to be or not, I, and I know we're all trying to do the right thing. I'm not. Saying one option is, you know, I'm, where you guys are trying to do something different. I'm just, we gotta, we gotta do what is going to be. The last kick in the butt for the citizens. And I know we're all trying to get there. I'm not saying, you know.
So.
It's just.
Here's where my mind's going on that side of things. Sorry, the sun's right in my eyes. But, uh, so I think personally, after looking at the numbers, the, the $25 meter fee. Bond fee, um, and the 10% increase is going to be cheaper in the long run, especially if in November we take and we separate out that. Meter fee, because I would assume, and this is just me assuming that the 6% um, that we charge for all our utilities for the. Use franchise fees then would not apply to that $25 where if we do a 25% increase. You're going to see a 25% increase and effectively another 6% increase on top of that 25% because of the franchise fee. So it's actually over the, the longer term is going to be more expensive to do 25%. Just on, no matter if it's in July or it's July split with October, because that. Is going to remain and the franchise fee is still going to be there. So.
So I think the goal Jay is for us to come back, you know, before certainly doing in November, um, try to bring back that analysis. It's just, it's, it's not easy because you basically got to look at it every, every meter, um, which we'll do. But to answer your question, um. You know, I think if we split the bond payment out, 75% residence, 25% demand. Historically, I know in 2023 and in, in 2024, it was about 90, 10. So from a, from paying the debt, right? From a percentage perspective. So if, if we move the demand customers a little bit. More into paying that by default, that means then the residents, all of them are going to be paying less. And if we just do the straight percentage increase, um, that percentage doesn't change. Cause the meter fee stays the same and we pull out, you know. 75% of our power goes to the residents, right? So we pull that out. So. It's a fair question and we don't have that specifically for you, but those things in my mind. Believe that they're at least held harmless compared to the, a 25% or a 10 and a 15. Maybe better.
Throw out, I, I did $250, um, and I did it with the 10% and the $25 fee. And I, I have that come out as $300. But if you do the 250 plus 25%. Plus the $12, it's 32450, just to give you an idea.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good job, Amara.
I don't know how much this would impact it, but you got to think too, you're approaching your high usage months right now.
Yeah.
So the lower percentage you put on the usage portion now is going to have.
Yeah, I know. It's just, it's, it's kind of going to be a kick in the butt to our citizens during the peak season. I mean.
Yeah, I mean, this is, this is definitely a tough one. We, until this year, we, you know, the. Cost of everything has gone through the roof. I mean, uh, uh, what do they call those? Jeff, the little boxes. Transformers have went from what 1500 to now four, four to $5,000. In the last two years. So it's in, I mean, I'm just reading the news and stuff, averages, looking at 18%. So it's in, I mean, I'm just reading the news and stuff averages, looking at an eighteen percent increase plus another six percent on top of that, um, for their, for their power supplies that they're, they're doing. So they're looking at twenty four percent across the board, I think for this year, and they did a what fifteen to twenty percent increase last year. So they've, I mean, the cost of electricity has just gotten ridiculous and the infrastructure attached to that. Julie, I think I took all your sun tonight.
This way.
I thought you planned it that way. You'd be in the spotlight.
No, I'm good. I'm good. It'll be down here shortly.
It'll come to me and Susan here in a minute.
So yeah, I think this is, I mean, for me, it's definitely painful, but that's why when I you know, thought about it and we worked through the numbers and stuff, I looked at what would be the least impactful to the residents and I, I think the least impactful is the ten percent and twenty five dollar meter fee overall. I mean, that's. Unfortunately, it does, it hits Baker pretty hard and I know, you know, that's not what we wanna do either, um, cause we need them to be successful as well, but out of fairness, it's the infrastructure covers everybody, so.
But if we don't have the citizens, then it doesn't matter. So I mean, doing it to them is fine, in my opinion.
The higher increase, yeah, it also.
To Baker and I mean.
Yeah, and that's why we had to look at it that way to, you know. Again, I think when we ran the numbers and Scott remind, um, correct me if I'm wrong, but roughly for Baker to cover their percentage of the debt, they would need to be like at twelve cents a kilowatt hour and they're at eleven cents. So that we're actually supplementing the residents, not city, but the residents are actually supplementing the on-demand users right now because they're not even up high enough to cover their portion of the debt. That accurate?
Yeah, I don't remember the numbers, but it sounds directionally accurate. I mean, yeah, I mean, Jay, I mean.
Option even more.
We have the opportunity because we have way too many rates. I think we've got nine different rates, um, classes. And I think we only use maybe four different actual rates. And so I do think we should take the advan, opportunity to sometime between now and the end of the year is to relook at those, collapse them into something more manageable. And then we can have that conversation around, you know, cause every dollar you don't take from the citizens has to come some, from somewhere else, right? So you can certainly look at the rate structures based on the demand customers and the citizens, say, well, we need to rebalance those, um, you know, but you certainly don't wanna do that in the dark. You wanna make sure you're talking to your school district and your university and, you know, any other demand meter customers. Make sure we understand impacts there. But to your point, we've just been doing it percentage increases from what we started with years ago and not really sure how those rates were set to begin with. But we do have the opportunity to, to do that as well.
And the demand also includes all the small businesses, so.
Yeah, well, some of them, I'm not sure what the cutoff is.
How many, we had like? Yeah, but how many customers we have, the demand meter, like thirty? Yeah. Yeah. So does that include like with the demand customers? Is that all the restaurants then with, are they all on that?
Yeah. Like I said, it goes back to, you know, you look at the other options and either way it's twenty five percent. So to me, when I think about the businesses, if I'm a business and I'm looking at twenty five percent increase or fifteen percent increase, well, I want the fifteen percent. I mean, uh, even out of the three options on that side of things, it's still less of an impact to those customers is what the one, options one and two would be. I think we really try talking around to every single, you know, type of scenario to try to make the light, least amount amount of impact we can.
Yeah.
But, you know, still while trying to get to our reserve balance, so we're not.
Cause I was just thinking, I, I mean, I don't wanna hurt the small businesses, cause so that takes the idea that I had, and I know you guys have worked on this.
No, and we'll take any.
No, I know, but it, my idea, but that's why I asked if the small business, if the restaurants are, they're on there, cause I don't want, I wouldn't wanna do it with them on it, but I was just thinking, well, what if we did the demand up to twenty percent and the retinon demand up to five? And lowered it to five, would that not, but I, but I don't wanna do that if that's gonna hurt small businesses, cause that's not.
The smaller businesses aren't gonna use as much, uh, as many kilowatts as say, Quick Shop, Casey's. Places that are gonna turn on power equipment.
Yeah.
Uh, it's, I don't think it's gonna affect our smaller businesses.
We need to make a decision tonight on what to do.
Yeah. We certainly could do one of the others and, and do the, you know, debt payment for next year. I mean, it's, we, we were going to the same spot and we're getting, we gotta get, we need to the same spot. And I think for just impact, minimizing the impact, um, you can look at option number one, you can just tell by where we're, our reserve lands, we're not, you know, it's the least impactful because our, our reserve fund's gonna be the lowest. It just may mean we have to, um, increase twenty six more than we're projecting right now. There's no getting away from finding the revenue, make sure we have our cost as low, cut as many as we can. But then you've gotta pay for your utility.
So if we do the ten percent in July and then we increase it another ten percent in twenty six? Am I reading that right?
You do ten percent in July and then fifteen percent in October and then.
Well, I'm talking about option three.
Oh, option three.
We're missing a number down there.
It'd be ten percent in July and that's it.
But not in twenty six?
Well.
Be in twenty.
Yeah, it's, so twenty six, twenty seven are the same.
That's hypothetical, cause I.
Hypothetical until you come back and meet.
I think once we see the numbers come in, I don't think it's gonna be.
Well, my question was if we do it ten percent now and then we end up doing it ten percent in twenty six, is it gonna be like a year, I mean, in July as opposed to like January?
I think that'd be all what the council decided when we got more numbers back this fall.
And option three, really, there needs to be a July of ten percent, July ten percent for the next two years.
No, 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 no.
No.
So, so in twenty twenty five, uh, with, with how it shows is July would be ten percent for the non-demand, fifteen percent for the demand, and that would be the, the only increase for this year. Then come January, February of next year, we would have to do a ten percent.
For everybody.
For everybody across the board, and that would be it for that year. But it all depends on what the usages are, and that's why we need, that's kind of a placeholder to get us to, you know, the nine hundred thousand, uh, for reserve fund.
Any other discussion on this agenda item?
No, I mean, I, I appreciate the thought process going on, um, and it's hard to dump this all on the council. I mean, we look at it every two weeks in depth in the committee, and so I know this is very hard to even rationalize and be asking all the right questions. So I guess, I mean, we have to have the, this decision. So we have to post the decision publicly for how many days before?
Sorry. So our next meeting's the fifth. And I think that's, uh, they want them in by Monday or maybe even Sunday evening. So it would not be published until the week of the, it'd be the fourteenth. So it would not hit the July, we'd already have July bills out.
I'm just trying to figure out.
But that's for.
So back it up to, to what do we, when does the decision need to make? Is it, uh, obviously tonight on a regular meeting, and I, I, I don't wanna get ahead of ourselves, but I'm very sensitive to this, this complex information being dumped on a council and asking them to make very hard decisions. So I wouldn't be opposed to having a special meeting to dive into it and make sure we all understand the decision we're making.
What if we publish it to our website the next morning? Cause we have that as one of our. I mean, with that.
So yeah, so we could publish it to our website as well as publish it in the Maple.
But the Maple still would be the following week.
Maple will be the following week, but I think I just have to double check that, that, that we were.
We could put it in the Lawrence Journal world. I mean, if we knew what, which one we were going, I could send it to him ahead of time, but that's gonna defeat the purpose because we don't know which one it's gonna be.
Problem. So what's the, we have to publish before?
It's enacted.
Enacted? And enacted means before the bills go out.
Correct.
Okay, so one day ahead of that?
So the bills don't go out till about the tenth, so.
It is one day legal? Is that the timeline? One day before the bills go out?
I would have to verify that just to make sure. It's usually, it's, it's a week or two before.
No.
Just to give people.
Time to.
And can we make it the August billing?
I mean, that's another option is we lose July, whatever increase, and we don't have to do it in July. The percentages might need to change, you know, we just, if we don't change the percentages and we don't do this, that captures July, we'll just be further behind at the end of this year. Was had to add that to next year. You know, say we're, you were, you know, fifty thousand dollars behind what this would have done if it captured July from a reserve perspective, then we can add that fifty thousand dollars into whatever rate we decide we wanna do, we add that as the catch-up amount to get us to where we wanted to be at the end of twenty six. So that's always an option. You just lose your, your largest months and, and the changes are more dramatic either way. But I, I, again, I'm not opposed to that. I think we all need to understand exactly as much as possible what, what this is gonna do. Because what it does then is when we talk in November, we're all more up to speed. We all know what those changes are, how this impacts everybody. So I guess I'm, I'm on board with delaying or trying to make it work if we can't. If you find that out, if we can do a special work session, I can't do in a work session, a special council meeting. Ahead of that, I mean, I, I just wanna make sure.
Can we come up with a couple of mock, um, bills Friday morning to show the council e, under each option?
Yeah, but we need to do that in open session, I think.
But I mean, if we come up with, if we come up with them, then we can show them at the next meeting.
Oh, yeah, yeah. So we would definitely start trying to answer some of the questions Jay had to see if we can go see what that impact is, if there is kind of a cutoff of, based on your usage, this is, you know, when we looked at this in twenty four, splitting the bill out, there was actually, um, moving the debt payment out into a separate payment, what that did is it lowered your rate, right? Cause all that payment's coming out. There was actually a, you could, you could chart, um, on your kilowatt hour usage. Per, you know, if you're a hundred kilowatt hour, you know, and you could see where with the new debt meter fee, where it was more advantageous for you to leave it at twelve versus moving into the twenty five or whatever it was. You can actually, there was actually a, a point in there. What we didn't have is, what is how many customers were below that, that line? How, how many people is it gonna affect? And that's, so I think what you're looking for is, hey, is this, is this detrimental to the citizens? If so, what level and how many? Right?
Yeah.
Yeah. We can take a stab at trying to do that again and look at it, cause I think it's, it's valuable information. And I'm not trying to delay.
Hey, if you, you think, but if, if.
It's just that, I mean. This is, and, and I know you guys have done everything you possibly can think of, and I'm.
Well, we could have brought the information you were looking for.
No. But.
That's what I'm trying to get to is more of that, you know?
Yeah.
Cause this kinda came up the last second as an option, and we didn't really have time to run those numbers. But I think it's important that we probably should do that.
I mean, yeah, I mean, I, obviously the option three gets us to the, to where we need to be and, but.
They all do.
I know, but like, I just, I, and, and I know you guys have done your due diligence. I know you've done everything possible and thank you very much cause my head would be spinning if I had to do this, what you guys have been doing the last year, trying to figure all this out. So thank you for doing that, but.
Been a lot of red faces.
Yeah, I, I don't doubt it, but I just feel like if we can run the numbers to figure out little closer, what is actually gonna be the less kick in the pants to the citizen?
Yeah.
I, I don't know, but.
If we don't enact this till August, maybe Baker Tilly can tell us, what does that put us back? Anything? I mean.
We have to look at the.
Yeah, you have to.
I mean, you thinking one, two percent more if we pushed it back or, I mean.
I don't wanna speculate without.
I mean, we'll, we'll have the option to either come back with bigger numbers or let it, cause I don't wanna cost, I don't wanna cost our citizens an extra one or two percent though, if it's if we come back a month later though, either.
Well, I mean, the way you have to think about it though is you're not really costing them more. They're either paying it on their rate or they're paying it on the meter fee. I mean, the money is coming in, um, the same amount of money, right? We're just changing how it's being paid. And it does impact because it's not all rate, it's all usage based, it does change. For, you know, for some customers that were low usage because that meter fee, so Jay, I think it's important that, you know, if we're wrestling with it, the more we can talk about it, the better chance our citizens are gonna understand it as well. So it's not bad conversation to have. You can't have too much of it.
Mm-hmm. And then I guess my only other, and I'm sure you guys have already thought of this, but if option three, would it be cheaper to have the customer charge be say thirty dollars and not a ten percent raise? Or what's, what would be less there?
I think we looked at it in the average, the average customer bill on the electricity was a hundred dollars, I think. Right around a hundred dollars, so.
And present ten dollars.
Yeah, so it's the same, either way you look at it, I guess. So it's twenty five dollars, ten percent. But then it's getting us further away from the intent, which is to be able to have a set debt, debt price. So that way, as we grow, we can reduce that a lot easier than the rate side of things. See what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm.
Cause then if we start pushing more into the meter fee, now we're getting further, we're in the same situation, just opposite. Shay?
Over here doing simple math, i, i, if, if the average is a hundred.
Over here doing simple math, if if the average is 100, then the cheapest option for your clients is always going to be option three. Even if you go up to 250, which I did, it's still going to be cheaper for them to do option three. Because the percentages that you're adding on is going to be less than the 1250. I think the problem is if you look at it as 25, I think you said they were already paying 12. So it's really another $13 on top of what they're paying. But doing the average, it's always going to be less expensive to them to do a flat rate of the 12 and then add just 10% on the other difference. Because the 10% is not on the new amount, right? Like if it's 100, it's going to now become 113, but you're paying 10% on the 100.
Correct. It'll come 110.
Yes. So it's 110 plus $13. So their bill goes from 100 to 123. If you do it on the average above where you're doing it 15%, so that 100 now becomes.
115.
115. And then you add another 10% on top of that. $16 in interest. Yeah, you're going to end up paying more that way than.
The 12, you have the meter fee in the rate right now.
Yeah.
That gets you up to 12650 instead of being at 122.
Actually increasing the that part as well.
Yeah, that's why it's important to get that meter fee pulled out.
Yeah.
And then if you had, I think you said something about having another percentage of 6% at some point otherwise. So that goes up even more. It's going to be way cheaper to do option three.
Yeah, I think even for the large families, I know you brought that up, Jay, for, you know, as Shay said, anytime you can do a flat rate and shift some of that out of the percentage, you're always because you're you're not compounding interest then. Right now, essentially what the city is doing is compounding interest. We're just keep adding and adding and adding where we're not pulling a portion of that out. So that way it's a set amount on this side. And, you know, if you leave town for six months, again, it goes back to the solar thing. You know, there it's built into their rate. There's not a minimum that is even covering our debt right now. So the rest of citizens that can't afford solar are supplementing those that can, if they can bring their they're putting enough solar down to build bring their bill down to $13, which is the minimum. So. Jeff, yeah, come up so people at home can hear you.
I just did a quick figure on what the break even if we did the the $25 versus the 12 at 866 kilowatt hours a month is the break even where you would be the same. If you're under that, then you're you would be paying incrementally higher percentage. If you're over that, you'd be paying incrementally lower. So that would give you an idea of what customers might might pay less versus more.
What's the rate right now? What's the current rate? Because you can kind of.
14 cents, 14 cents.
So what would that be on a monthly? So it's per kilowatt hour. So it's. 121.
Yeah, 120.
Dollar, $120 a month is that point if you're paying.
You're using.
Using less than that, then it's going to impact it a little bit negative. But it's going to be a sliding scale, right? It doesn't. And if you're paying more than that, then it's actually beneficial for you. I just don't have a feel for how many customers are below that usage level and how many are above it. That's a good point. Yeah.
And getting that number now would probably be skewed because there's probably more people are using more electricity.
What you'd want to do is look at for an annual on an annual basis, the averages for the year. And then that'll kind of set the crossover point. But I think that's spot on for the current month. Usage. And again, we can change that crossover point by changing the rates on the demand customers versus, you know, so all that are knobs we can turn if you're trying to have an impact on those two different entities.
I mean. To the council, what you guys want to do?
I feel comfortable with with option three. And I feel like I have enough information to make that decision, but I want to know that Jay's comfortable. That's it's it's a lot to digest. So.
Yeah, I I mean, we can. I mean, if we need to vote tonight, we can vote. So.
Yeah.
And keep in mind, we can make any change after this that we want. Certainly, the next point will be November, looking at 26. And if we'll look at the we'll look at these numbers close more closely. And if it's like, well, that's not quite what we needed to do, we can actually make that back up in 26. Right? So it this isn't something that you set on a path and you can't get off of it. Feels like it, but it's not.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move to approve ordinance 1513. Option three is presented. Second.
Moving second, Julie.
Yes.
Scott.
Yes.
Susan, Jay.
Nay.
Motion passes three, one. Next item on the agenda is the pull banner discussion.
Hello, everybody. I'm Dana Mullis. I'm the Organization Director for the Chamber of Commerce and the Director of the Main Street Program. I believe you all have. Do you have copies of the pull banner designs? Great. So I'm here tonight on behalf of the chamber, and we wanted to share our final designs for the pull banner project. This is a completed Main Street transformation strategy. Baldon City has been a designated Main Street since 2021. And we're very proud of this milestone. We want to thank the city and the CDC Committee for your time and your efforts on helping us with this project. When I stepped into the role as the Main Street Director in 2023, we had actually lost our accreditation due to a long transition period. We didn't have a director. But I'm proud to report that in 2024, we've received our accreditation for 2025. So our program is now accredited once again. So our banner project was led by our design team, which was chaired by Jeanette Blackmar and Douglas Bradlin. They, along with the mural committee from the Lumberyard Art Center, did a really great job of engaging the community. We tried to coordinate efforts to shape the themes that reflect the town. So we identified our themes and we had those approved through a CDC meeting. And we began the request for proposal process and we were lucky to come up with two local artists, Emma Bailey and Christina Maliki, who have done all of the artwork that you will see on these banners. So these banners celebrate Baldon City's history, community service, veterans, schools, baker, arts, festivals, and more. We tried to make this a reflection of our values and make our downtown a vibrant place for visitors and our community members.
Any questions for Dana on this? All right. Thanks, Dana.
Thank you. Was there any feedback on any of the designs?
I think they all look great.
I love them.
Yep.
Awesome.
I think they reflect well to our community.
Thank you.
Thank your team for all their hard work they put into this.
I will. Thank you so much. This was really.
Are you only going to choose one of these or are you getting all of them?
We are going to do all nine designs, and I think the current plan is to do them in sets of three. One set will include the Maple Leaf banner, and we hope to have that up before the next Maple Leaf. And then it'll just kind of be up to, you know, you guys, how you want to hang them.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Dana.
Anybody from public like to speak this agenda item? Not council discussions?
I think the artist came up with some really good ideas. And they worked really hard on it. They brought it to the committee and which I'm a part of. And we gave them some suggestions of maybe something that we could change. And she went and they went back and and did it just exactly like we wanted it. So they did a lot of hard work on this.
Yeah, I thought they looked great. With that, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the designs.
I move that we approve the poll banner designs that have been brought forward.
I second it.
And moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. All right, next revenue neutral discussion, set hearing date. Matt, you're back up.
So the I'll just do a little quick overview of what the revenue neutral rate is. Essentially, in an effort to improve transparency, the legislature has decided to require cities, counties to adopt a mill levy that would essentially give them the same tax revenue that they from property tax that they received during the prior year. And they call that the revenue neutral rate. So essentially, if you have any valuation increase, the revenue neutral rate is going to be a lower mill levy than what you adopted the prior year. So it doesn't take advantage of any growth. It doesn't take advantage of any, you know, new properties that come on your rolls. It's just basically saying if you want, unless you want to, you know, only get what the dollar amount that you've levied last year, you need to have this special process for adopting a budget. And the first step in that is notifying Douglas County that you are planning to exceed the revenue neutral rate. This is what you see there. That's the certificate that'll you'll will need a clerk or member of the government body to sign it for you and send in, and it's due on July 20. So and essentially this is also that now they're asking not only for the the they're asking for the rate you're planning to levy, not just, you know, that you are exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And they're wanting you to say the date of the public hearing for that separate public hearing, because now not only do you just need one public hearing to adopt your budget, you need two now, one for the neutral rate and one for the actual budget. So that's what we have here, a little bit of information. As you see there, the rate that you're essentially, you're giving yourself the ability to levy up to this rate with this notice. So that's the rate you have the milk rate you had last year, 43.390. The revenue neutral rate that they are saying that you need to publish this notice in order to that rate would be 38.943, which is a reduction of 4.4 mills, a dollar impact of $243,000 plus. And meaning basically you'd have to reduce your mill rate by 17% unless you go through this process. And that's general fund probably only. So that's talking about basic general government operating services.
And this mill rate includes the library mills as well. Correct.
I don't think that I think that specifically you could take it from wherever you wanted to.
So I mean, we levy separate. Our library has their own mills that are levied under the city's mills.
Right.
So this includes those four point some mills that they levy.
I mean, you would you would have to figure out where you're going to take it from. But yes, I mean, you could take it from the library, but you know, that's you'd be taking money from the library, not just forfeiting yourself.
So my other question then on this is this mill levy, just for the people at home, we can decrease it just like we did last year.
Right.
To counteract some of the increase in the assessed valuations, but also the percentage that the city is actually receiving in new dollars is around 5%. Is that correct? Of actual new dollars that we weren't receiving last year.
I'd have to I'd have to look at your notice again.
I think that's what.
Personal property.
Yeah, from this assessed valuation increase, it's not, you know, it sounds like it's much higher number, but it's actually a 5% increase of actual real dollars, I think, is what Ben said.
Yeah.
In the committee. So I just wanted to make sure that talk to that a little bit. So. But again, this does not put the council into a position where you have to do this.
No, you're you're not.
This is just the cap.
You're not obligating yourself to anything tight. This is literally just a first step in the process. This doesn't affect your budget at all. You can still you can't go over this amount if when you adopt, but you can adopt up to this amount of all your site.
Didn't have to. We didn't have to publish a cap last year, right?
Yeah.
We didn't. Okay.
So essentially what this is doing is you're you're officially notifying the county. And so the county is going to have to put send out statements saying this is what would happen to your tax bill, individual taxpayer, if they adopt that full amount. So this is that's why they're making you do it this early in the year. You know, we're not you're not even allowed to have your hearing until after for, you know, more than a month from now. But they want to have time to receive this information, print those statements, mail them out to the all the taxpayers. So that's why this first step happens so early.
But to answer your question, yes, last year we had to so you can't increase your mill levy over the last year's mill levy by.
And if you publish.
Can if we published it.
Yeah, I just want to kind of stitch this together in my own mind. So we went through the budget workshop and we talked about, I think we used the baseline of of the flat mill levy, right? And that flat mill levy gave us about a 5% revenue increase with the same number of mills. So I guess I'm comfortable in keeping it there. Means if we decide we have to raise it, we can't, but we certainly can lower it from there. But I think when we went through that budget process, you know, there's a lot of stuff we left off the table, but we all kind of went through that knowing we wanted to keep the mill levy flat. So that's it ties our hands at current mill levy or lower. So if you're comfortable with kind of what we went through the budget workshop, then that flat mill levy will work.
Yeah. And I'll just add to that, you know, when we're talking the 5% thing, you know, our staff salaries, I think, from general fund is roughly 70, 80% of the total general fund. And, you know, we try to give around a 5% increase between the cost of living increase and the merit increase every single year to our staff. So most of this this assessed valuation increase, when it's around 5%, is really just going to increase the staff's
Right.
salaries to keep them, you know, to maintain that because I know that's one of the strategic goals of the council that the city and the council set was to retain staff. So so this as well captures that. Are any questions on this? Anybody from public like to talk to this agenda item? Any further council discussion? I did just notice one spelling error before we signed that.
Yeah, Douglas, I noticed that, too.
Yeah. Don't want to do that.
No.
And I think their Douglas County actually has a electric portal that'll this will be this will be sent through. So you're not actually going to be using that form. That's just the kind of the official backup.
I think we still we still signed the form, but we scanned it.
You still signed it.
Yeah, but.
We have to turn it in.
Yeah, I submitted electronically through their portal.
It was at the reprint this often.
No, I have to manually type it in, is my understanding. But we have a signed copy just to have. Yeah, you'll have to sign it. City Hall, too. But I just I punch in everything.
Okay.
But we could still go back and edit this.
Yes.
Yes, we have the option to with going this route.
With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I move we approve the notice of revenue neutral intent as presented with the change of the county to Douglas spelled correctly.
Moved in second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion passes. Council Committee reports budget finance, Scott.
Kind of had it here tonight, which is good. But we spent a lot of time talking developing these three. But we spent a lot of time talking, developing these three options and making sure we understood where we'd land from a reserve perspective. So we don't need to talk about that. Also talked about the general fund. If you remember in the budget workshop, you know, our general fund was alarmingly low, projected to end the year, well below where we needed to be. So we talked about, we just revisited that and we, we, we came to the conclusion that we actually have another $250,000 that once we sell that motel lot, um, will go into the general fund. Okay. So that was the missing piece, why it was so low, or one of the reasons it was so low. But that will get us to an acceptable range. We're gonna still need to increase it, but it's not as dire as it looked.
Plus a portion of the tax credits, depending on where those come at.
I thought that all went to the quality of life.
I think he only had 500,000. We're anticipating about 700,000. So 500,000 would go towards the bond. And then we'd have 200,000 from those tax credits that would still be available either in the quality of life fund. But either way, the quality of life fund is covered under the general funds.
So it was good news. We kind of came up with the, what was felt pretty bad when we left that workshop. Then just a real brief discussion around the municipal solar project. And, you know, the conversation was with the clean energy credits going away. We don't have a location identified. And I think some of the companies that would do this are not even entertaining new projects that, you know, our ability to develop more municipal solar is really tabled for the, for, for foreseeable future. The good news is we talked about, you know, if you remember the, the, uh, capacity conversation we had that we needed this three megawatts to get us to where we need to be 27. But, you know, Jeff shared with us that the, the peak rates we talked about, which is kind of sets where your capacity needs to be, was pretty aggressively forecast by KMEA. We don't think they're going to be that high, which lowers our capacity needs. So I don't want to speak for you, Jeff, but I think he felt we're going to be fine. Um, as long as the generators downtown are still running and are still, they still take those in the program. Once they don't, we're going to have to add more generators. That was it.
Next meeting?
Next meeting is this Friday at seven 30 AM, second floor, city hall.
Do we need one?
We do.
Okay. Public safety or community development, Corey or Susan?
We have not met since the last meeting. We're scheduled to meet on Monday, the 28th, four o'clock.
Public safety, Susan.
Not able to get schedules aligned to meet this month. So we're meeting next August 12th at four o'clock.
Public works Julie.
Uh, yeah, I'm happy to announce that our new substation location is getting worked on. And, um, the pad for the new transformer has been worked on all this last week. Contractor will return to work on rest of the pads and also erect the switchgear building. The city line crew will begin installing new poles for the new substation line that will run from Sixth and Orange to the new sub site. We're continuing to still find sediment in the water chemical that's used for the generators. They're continuing discussions with manufacturers and distributors to find out the problem and to see what they can do about it. The work on the golf course parking lot has begun. The citywide cleanup went well. Uh, they brought in four extra dumpsters for that this, this spring. Fall cleanup will be, uh, the weekend prior to Maple Leaf Festival. Public works crew have worked on cleaning up the old trailer park brush and tall grass on that portion that's going to be sold. Also met with green sanitation about trash trucks damaging the chip seal in the cul-de-sacs when they tried to turn. It's pulling up the chip seal on that. Other discussions, uh, we also talked about community solar projects. We discussed the leaf design, as I had mentioned earlier. From now on, we will be meeting at the public works conference room, um, going forward. It'll still be at nine o'clock and our next meeting is August 14th.
Strategies playing Scott.
Did not meet and we don't have anything on the calendar.
Staff comments?
Yeah, I, I've gotten some letters. Oh, I'm sorry, staff.
You're up.
Go ahead. Uh, this has been on my mind all night. I'm trying to remember.
No staff comment. Good.
I'm sorry.
You're good.
No, I, I was just going to mention that we, I have been receiving some letters from, um, some concerned citizens about the, uh, length of the fireworks time to.
He stole my thunder right here.
I, I wasn't trying to Julie. I'm just trying to, you know.
Doesn't matter as long as we get it out there.
Yeah. So I've, I've been reached out by several folks for that. So I just kind of wanted to put that on, on the council's radar. As we, you know, revisit that later on this year.
I've already, uh, sent it on to Corey to include in a CDC meeting. So.
Thank you.
I think we've all probably been notified.
Yeah.
Yeah. CDC. I was kind of thinking about that today because I was looking through all my emails and responding to them. And if, if we didn't want to change the length, and I don't know if it's even doable, but I was thinking maybe before the first, there's only designated areas to do it. But if we decided not to act on anything, but, but then that'd be a discussion to have with the chief and all that to see if that would even be doable or, I mean, I don't know. Just. But.
Something to consider.
Any other counsel comments? I just have a couple since, uh, obviously something was brought up tonight for me personally is that the program that I'm involved in was enacted before I was even mayor. And for my construction house. Oh, I'm just putting it out there, uh, for everybody. And, and the reason why my house is not on city utilities is because, the city doesn't own those utilities and it costs hundreds of thousands of dollars to purchase those utilities. So I have no choice because personally I would rather be on city electric than the electric that I'm going to be on because now it's going to cost me multiple thousands of dollars to have a backup generator. So that way if I lose power. So I just wanted that out there for the public in full transparency that, um, I'm not getting any further benefit than anybody else that is rehabbing a house or building a house in, in our community. So I, I think that was.
I didn't even know you were building a house.
We do need an executive session tonight.
Oh man.
Probably 10 minutes. Okay. For 10 minutes, uh, let's just go till eight 50 for attorney client. Privilege matters. Is that accurate? With myself, the city council, I'd say Russ and the city attorney.
And moving going to executive session with the council, the mayor, city administrator, acting city administrator and our city attorney for until eight 50.
I second it.
Been moved in second. All in favor say aye. All opposed nay. Motion passes. We're in executive session.
I think they're automatic.